To look at and approve our minute meetings from the last meeting. Does anybody have any questions or corrections they'd like to see changed or fixed on our minutes? Nobody? Okay, we'll just look for a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes as written.
So by roll call vote, Chairman Parker.
Hi.
Walthius. Sorry. Commissioner Walthius. Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Journey. And Commissioner Unger. So passes. Four ayes, one abstain, and two absent.
All right, well, we're gonna move on to our first public hearing. Application SD 20-02. First of all, the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Arguments and evidence must be directed toward that criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties the opportunity to respond to the issues precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. So with our first application, does anybody have any personal bias?
No.
None.
No.
Okay. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
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 Reminder to unmute yourself before you talk.
Yeah. Any ex parte information?
No.
Commissioner Stevens, no.
Okay. All right, well, let us move on to the staff report.
Okay, the applicant is requesting to subdivide an approximately 8.76 acre property into 46 lots ranging from 5,006 to 13,644 square feet. The proposed subdivision's average lot size is 6,221 square feet. The applicant will complete the subdivision in two phases of development. Approximately 1.71 acres shall be dedicated as public right-of-way for the new local streets to serve the proposed subdivision. An additional .41 acres will be reserved as tracks for stormwater detention and facilities. Based on review of the FEMA Firm Maps Panel 41043C 0916 through 914G dated September 29, 2010, the subject property is located outside the 100-year floodplain and in an area of minimal flood hazard. The subject property does not contain wetlands that are inventoried on the Sweet Home Local Wetlands Inventory and the National Wetlands Inventory map. Department of State Lands determined that a jurisdictional waterway appears to exist on the lot, referenced in Section 2 of the staff report. The subject property has frontage along Highway 20, 44th Avenue, and 45th Avenue. The main entrance to the subdivision will be on 45th Avenue. City water and sewer are available at Highway 20 and 44th Avenue. City water services are available at 45th. Based on review of the mapping submitted and after review of the available information for the subject tax lot, the proposed project, Mountain River Subdivision, 46 residential lots, one open space track, new streets, and associated utilities, appears that it will impact jurisdictional wetlands of the state, including a compensatory mitigation wetland site. Per the DSL comments in Section 2 of the staff report, based on review of documentation submitted and after review of available information for the subject tax lot, a jurisdictional waterway appears to exist on the lot. Impacts, removal, fill, or other ground alterations to the waterway, which is an unnamed perennial stream, equal to or greater than 50 cubic yards would require a permit from DSL. There may also be jurisdictional wetlands on the lot. However, the presence and boundaries of wetlands cannot be determined from an off-site assessment. If future total impacts are expected to reach or exceed 50 cubic yards, it is recommended that the applicant have a tax lot assessed for jurisdictional wetlands by a qualified wetland professional prior to the earth disturbance activities. A wetland delineation report should then be submitted to DSL for review and approval prior to the ground alterations. This response is advisory in nature and does not replace the delineation completed by the qualified wetland professional. That was DSL's comments. Per the staff engineer's comments in Section 2, and Joe is present, a segment of fire lane easement will loop westward to link with 44th Avenue at the Osage Street intersection. Lot number 10 has an easement along the north edge for a 22-foot wide fire lane. In this location, the city would recommend connecting Osage Street on the alignment of the old road of Osage Street. The Transportation System Plan, Table 4.3, has the maximum parameters for local street and curb-to-curb width so that smaller sizes can be accommodated. There is also a request from the neighboring property owner for consideration of an option of access along this street area for lot development on the upper elevation portion of the property immediately north. Per the Public Works comment in Section 2, the intersection of Lund Street and 45th Avenue indicate a stubout for future street extension going northward. Public Works finds that it is better for road connectivity to extend the road west to make a connection with Osage Street and 44th Avenue. Sweet Home has poor east-to-west connectivity, particularly on the north side of Main Street, and connecting to Osage Street would provide a more cohesive local neighborhood network. This was also the original alignment of Osage Street prior to its vacation, as indicated on County Survey 3643, and the old roadbed is still there. In this scenario, the 22-foot accessway would become public right-of-way with half-street development. The other half-street to be developed by the adjacent property owner upon development of their property. The plans indicate Lot 10 fronting 45th Avenue with half-street improvements. However, approximately the first 250 feet of 44th Avenue from Main Street is gravel road, and the remaining approximately 300 feet is totally unimproved and consists of soil and grass. Public Works mows it to maintain access to our water mains. Because it is passable, it is reasonable to anticipate that the resident of Lot 10 will use 44th Avenue for access since it is their shortest distance to Main Street. Therefore, Public Works recommends the commission require the applicant to construct at least a gravel lane down 44th Avenue. This gravel access should be constructed as a roadbed to provide for future street development and should also meet fire access standards. So Staff Engineer Joe Graybill is in attendance to answer further questions regarding this criteria, but I will keep going in before the question period. Also per the staff engineer's comments in Section 2 above, there is a 1-foot-wide reserve strip across the end of 45th Avenue owned by Seal Rock Holdings LLC that will need to be dedicated to the public right-of-way of the city of Sweet Home. The existing 45th Avenue has a 50-foot-wide right-of-way with a submitted plan showing a reduction in curb width to the 21-foot width of the rest of the project. The submitted plan shows a potential extension of the streets northward to the neighboring property. However, the land north of the roadway drops approximately 50 feet in 150 feet, resulting in a slope about 33% to 35%. The city's street grade maximum is 12%, which would require a length of 400 feet for a road grade to the lower level. It would be better to consider looping the street without extending to the property line. Lot number 10 has an easement along the northern edge for a 22-foot wide fire lane. In this location, the city would recommend connecting Osage Street on the alignment of the old road of Osage Street. The Transportation System Plan 4.3 has the maximum parameters of local street curb-to-curb width so that the smaller sizes can be accommodated. Public parking on both sides of the street will be too narrow for vehicle passage. One side of the street will need to be designated a fire lane curb with no parking signage. This applies to the cul-de-sac street segment also. Which side will be restricted is up to the owners coordinating with the fire district. Cat Engineering recommends the connection to 45th Avenue be a public street. Coordination with adjacent owners is option for the developers. The subdivision 21-foot curb-to-curb width will need at least one side designated as fire lane. Per the Public Works comments in Section 2, the plan indicates 21-foot curb-to-curb width. This is extremely narrow and does not meet current strength standards. A minimum curb-to-curb width of 28 feet and a right-of-way width of 47 feet is required to meet the standards of Transportation System Plan, Table 4.3. Table 4.3 also sets 30 feet and 50 feet as the standard curb-to-curb and right-of-way widths respectively. The existing stubout of 45th Avenue and all other modern subdivisions with a public street meet these standards. Public Works finds no topographical constraints to justify a variance from these standards, and therefore at least 28 feet curb-to-curb width and 46 feet right-of-way width is required. If for some reason the commission finds that it is impossible for the development to meet these standards, then Public Works would prefer to waive the 3-foot planter strip in favor preserving the curb-to-curb width. Parking restrictions on one or both sides will likely be required through a double-S curve on Lund Street. The intersection of Lund Street and 45th Avenue indicates a stubout for future street extension going northwards. Public Works finds that it is better for road connectivity to extend the road west to make the connection with Osage Street at 44th Avenue. The applicant should make reasonable attempts to work collaboratively with the Saniam River Development Company LLC to make sure that the street alignment is equally desirable to both developments. The city will facilitate such discussions upon request. Public Works recommends requiring the westward Osage Street connection with half-street improvements unless the Saniam River Development Company LLC provides testimony that a different configuration would better serve both developers. If you have any more questions about this criteria, Staff Engineer Joe Graybill is here to answer those. On page 8 of the applicant summary submitted October 30, 2020, states that the proposed subdivision creates two through lots. The applicant revised the site plans on November 6, 2020, removing the through lots. Per the revised site plans, no through lots are proposed. The applicant is proposing three flag lots, Lot 6, Lot 23, and Lot 24. Lot 23 and 24 were the through lots on the site plan that was submitted on October 30, and then changed two flag lots on the revised site plan submitted November 6. As part of the ODOT Access Management Program, driveways for Lot 23 and 24 shall be accessed from the public side street, not Highway 20. Per the staff engineer's comments in Section 2, water is available at the end of 45th Avenue and at the corner of 44th Avenue and Osage Street. The proposed plan shows a connection through the development with the western portion being a fire lane easement. This connection will connect to only the 8-inch water main in 44th Avenue. Sanitary sewer has connections along the southern boundary by the adjacent apartments. Per the Public Works comments in Section 2, water availability to this development is very good. The exact water locations will be reviewed during construction permitting. Sewer mains should be into the public street to maximum extent practical. The sewer main indicated in easement on Lot 6 through 9 should be relocated to Lund Street. The sewer network, as indicated, is also double-connected. The project engineer shall work with Public Works to redevelop this utility plan for construction permitting. Based on the findings discussed in Section 3 above, the staff recommends that this application be approved. The application shall be subject to compliance with the conditions listed below. As required by the findings of fact presented in Review Criteria, Section 3, any modifications to the condition listed below would require approval in accordance to the provision of law. If the Planning Commission approves this application, staff recommends that the condition of approval listed below be required in order to ensure that the applicant is consistent with the findings in the Review and Design Criteria, Section 3, and as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to Land Use Board of Appeals may only be based on Review and Design Criteria, but staff recommended conditions if the applicant is approved. Number 1, the final configuration of the proposed lot shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application. The final configuration is to subdivide an approximately 8.76 acre property into 46 lots ranging from 5,006 to 13,644 square feet. The proposed subdivision average lot size is 6,221 square feet. The applicant will complete the subdivision in two phases of development. Approximately 1.71 acres shall be dedicated as public right-of-way for new local streets to serve the proposed subdivision. An additional .41 acres will be reserved as tracks for stormwater detention facilities. Number 2, the applicant shall specify a period of time for the completion of each phase. Number 3, the applicant shall dedicate as public right-of-way to the city of Sweet Home the 1-foot-wide reserve strip across the end of 45th Avenue. Number 4, as part of the ODOT Access Management Program, driveways for Lot 23 and 24 shall be accessed from public side street, not Highway 20. Number 5, the new property lines shall be situated so that all buildings and structures comply with the yard setback requirements of the residential high-density R2 zone. Number 6, the applicant shall follow the city of Sweet Home criteria for street naming. The street name Lund Street would require a variance to deviate from the naming standards established in Sweet Home Municipal Code 12.20.030C. With the South City limit as baseline, all streets running generally east and west shall be called streets and shall be assigned names of locally familiar trees and shrubs and shall be alphabetically arranged from south to north. For example, Alder Street, Birch Street, et cetera. Number 7, the applicant shall make public the drainage channel that crosses the property from Main Street northwards. The applicant shall include a stormwater detention facility, Sweet Home Municipal Code 1612050, stormwater and surface drainage. Design of drainage within a subdivision or partition shall be to city standards and shall be approved by the city engineer, Sweet Home Municipal Code 1612050. The design shall take into account the capacity and grade necessary to maintain unrestricted flow from the area, draining through the subdivision or partition, and to allow extension of the system to serve such areas. And B, provisions shall be made for water quality and retention storage areas designed and constructed to meet the standards set by the city. Number 8, Sweet Home Municipal Code 1612040, water system. The design shall be to city standards and shall be approved by the city engineer. The design shall take into account provisions for extension beyond the subject property. Design shall adequately loop the city system. Sweet Home Municipal Code 1612045, sanitary sewer system. The design shall be to city standards and shall be approved by the city engineer. The design shall take into account capacity and grade to allow for desirable extension beyond the subject property. Number 10, oh, I apologize, we've repeated this one. The applicant shall specify in a timeframe for each phrase of the proposal. Number 11, within one year from date of approval of the tentative plan, the applicant shall prepare a final plat in conformance with the approved tentative plan, the provisions of this title, and the provisions of ORS Chapter 92. The applicant shall submit a final subdivision plat for approval by the city according to the procedures and requirements of Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.20. The applicant shall provide all information required by 16.20. Number 12, improvements with the subdivision shall be installed at the expense of the subdivider required by Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.24.050. Improvements shall be made under the procedures and specifications listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code Chapter 16.24. The applicant shall obtain all applicable development permits, which include but are not limited to public works permits, development permits, including building permits, and erosion control permits. The applicant shall obtain a 1200C stormwater permit from the Oregon Department of Environment and Quality and a Department of State Lands permit as applicable. So the motions, after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following. 1, move to approve application SD 20-02, including the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 above the staff report, adopting the findings of fact listed in Section 3 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare in order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Number 2, move to deny application SD 20-02, including adopting findings. You'll need to specify the reasons. The setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare in order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Number 3, move to continue the public hearing to a date and certain time or other. And with the permission of the commission, I will remove condition of approval number 10 because it's a repeat.
Do you want to addition to that? Move back in the section of condition. Oh, unmoved, or turn on your light. I didn't see the light. It was, but nonetheless. In condition 4, ODOT also wanted an old unused driveway removed along the Main Street frontage, and they need to coordinate with the ADA corner reconstruction that ODOT
Does the Planning Commission have any questions for staff?
I have questions. I'm not sure if I should ask them now or later.
So if you feel your questions can be answered by staff now, you're welcome to ask them now. If you would like to direct those to the applicant, you can wait for the applicant testimony and...
So, Joe, I'm gonna ask you a question about, about street width.
Okay.
So on page 5 in the application, in the middle of the page, it talks about the 21 feet curb-to-curb width, but that Public Works recommends a wider area for the road size. And I don't quite understand how the criteria from the applicant fits in with beauty strip or how beauty strip fits in with 28 feet curb-to-curb with the 46 feet right-of-way. Can you elucidate that a little bit?
Yes, I'll give that a try. The current version of the TSP chart on street widths, it needs review, and it needs to be changed. But when you add everything up, the maximum, the maximum widths tend to be an odd number. And those numbers in that table, 8.3 or whichever the number is, 4.3, that they're maximums. There's no minimum, and therein lies some of the flexibility, but some of the vagueness of the code standard. And what they're looking at is the fairly narrow 21-foot curb-to-curb. To give that a little more width, the otherwise required 3-foot planter strip may or may not be able to go away. And by the time you add up the, you know, the 5-foot sidewalks and the 3-foot planter strip and normal lane widths and parking widths, you end up with a kind of an odd number. But they're maximums. There's no minimum, and so the choice is somewhat flexible. It is fairly narrow, and therein lies the comments for one side to have or be a fire lane so that there's at least 14 feet worth of access for emergency vehicles, assuming a 7-foot-wide minimum parking lane, which is very minimum.
So you're talking about a 5-foot sidewalk width?
Is a standard, yes.
Standard, because there are many sidewalks in town that are not 5 feet wide.
Correct. There's a lot that are 3 and 1/2 feet wide. There's a significant number that are 4 feet wide. They were built over the years in the past with different standards. 5 is the standard now. 6 on collectors or arterials. And with some of the flexibility, you could get by with one side sidewalks. But that chart, which I didn't bring up, but I have, in some cases says 2-sided sidewalks are required, and in some cases, one side. So there's some flexibility in the configuration to still have a small right-of-way, which is the goal of any developer, to maximize their square yards.
Right.
But still provide travel lanes, parking, pedestrian access, the amenities of a planter strip, which you find in most places. I hate, it's a shame that some of the tables are a little bit vague, but that, like I say, that is in review with our upcoming TSP to renovate that.
Because really, a 21-foot-wide roadway for a development of this size seems really
It is. It allows basically a 14-foot-wide passage, somewhat similar to what First Avenue is, some of the other narrower streets that have parking on both sides.
Both sides, right.
Because you have a 7- to 8-foot-wide parking lane.
Right.
6 and 1/2-foot-wide vehicle.
Right.
The limited space in the middle.
Right.
Requires a queuing of vehicles.
Right.
To a degree, it's considered a traffic calming device as well, but you've got to provide emergency access widths.
Right, I agree. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask Joe a question? On 45th Avenue, Angela said it was recommended that it stay at 28 feet instead of going down to 21 feet. Is that right at the entrance, or is that the whole way through?
She was recommending that the entire project be 28 feet curb-to-curb. Right there at the end of the right-of-way or within a few feet, it transitions to 21 somewhat abruptly. Typically, that may be better done at the intersection itself, but Public Works is requesting that it be throughout the project to be 28.
All 45th Avenue?
Yes, 45th Avenue, as it goes through the intersection, loops around to the west, and I believe the rest of the Loop Street and the cul-de-sac.
So is that all the streets?
Yes.
Or just 45th?
That would be all of the streets, both the east and west, including the cul-de-sac, and the north-south 45th Avenue. That's what the request is.
Any other commissioners have any questions for staff before opening?
Yeah, I have another question, please.
Go ahead.
Joe, on 44th Avenue, it is recommended that we at least have a gravel road in place. Is that, does that specify a width on that?
No, although as a standard fire code development, it's 20 feet wide. To have a fire-rated roadway, otherwise known as an all-weather surface roadway, it should be 20 feet wide. A rock base typically is 8 to 12 inches thick in order to carry emergency vehicles at a minimum. And with the future intent that at some point, the roadway area will be paved, but at this moment, it would be just for the pathway through there to have an adequate structural road base.
So is that the minimum road base needed for paving later on?
12 inches is the normal roadway base to be paved to a city street later on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for an all-weather surface without any asphalt or any other road surface on
All right, if nobody else has anything for staff at this time, we'll go ahead and, oh, go ahead, Henry. All right, if nobody else has anything for staff at this time, we'll go ahead and, oh, go ahead, Henry.
Okay, it seems to me that we're landlocking the property to the north. And somehow or other, if we had more east-west, north-south streets that we can put the roads in, it would be continued into this other property. Was that addressed with the applicant?
So are you talking about, there's a pretty steep ravine to the north, or the elevation goes down significantly. And so their only point where another property to the north can access anything is along that proposed fire lane. That's the, the area in question. So I have talked to that property owner and they are interested in having access to their property in that area. But I do not know if they've been able to discuss that matter with the applicant.
I think we have some responsibility in that area.
Right. And in the report, it was mentioned that we, we recommend that be something that you discuss, whether, whether that fire lane should instead be turned into a half-street improvement. And, and so that the other property owner could have the option of constructing half a street to, for their properties to access. There's a, the issue with that though is, is how much land they, they have to be able to give up for a street. Because as we said, it's fairly steep. And so even if the other property owner puts in, you know, puts in a half a street to access it, then they have even less flat land on which to construct a house or houses. So it's, it's not an easy matter to make sure that there's access there.
So at 45th, we're to go straight north. What you're saying is that we, we have an incline that we're not able to deal with.
Yeah, Joe might be a better person to comment on this. But if 45th were to go straight, when it gets to the, the end of those lots, essentially, it would, and I'll put it up on the screen so you can see it, that there is a significant drop-off there. Hold on a moment, no.
It might be nice if in our package, we had some kind of a topographical map.
Okay, so you see on the map here, if, if instead of curving to the east, 45th Avenue went straight, you would basically be driving off a cliff. It's, it's quite steep.
It's about a 50-foot draw.
So the only way to, for that area that's, that's marked Phase Two, the only way for that, there to be any access to the north for a property there would be to construct a road that switches back and forth in order to make that descent. Wouldn't you say, Joe?
Yes. Yeah. That, that lower area also has a designated easement through the grounds of the water treatment plant and up their driveway over to the intersection at 47th and Nandina. And it was specifically because of the height of that embankment of that property that the easement be created in order to provide access because of the difficulties of going up the hill over onto the old Osage Street alignment. You could do that, but you'd have an awfully long run length of a roadway to be able to go down that hill and doing the switchback style.
In, in conversations that I've had with the property owner to the north, the only area that they are interested in having access to in this, off of this subdivision would be that Osage Street extension or fire lane as the applicant has in here.
Isn't this a topographical map on the back of the satellite view?
So the previous page.
That's what Henry was asking for.
Yeah, this one right here is a topographical map.
All right, if no other commissioners or staff had any discussion, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:10. So at this time, do we have our applicant on the phone?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead and, nice and slowly, so it's easier on Angela later. Go ahead and state your name and address and what your proposal is.
Okay, is there an echo at all? Is there an echo?
I don't hear one here.
You're coming through great on our end.
Okay, you want, you want my personal address is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, my name's Eric Lund and my address is 6321 Lake Point Way, Sweet Home.
And your proposal, go ahead and just give us a brief summary of what you'd like to do.
Okay, can I ask like two questions after the summary? Because I'm kind of curious about a couple of things.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I was the developer of Lake Point Estates and actually the owner of the new apartments going in on 2500 Long Street and obviously the owner of the property we're discussing right now. I believe there's a, you know, a definite need for housing, both rentals and homes and sweet home. I know that there's limited, you know, homes to purchase and even if there are, they are under contract within a week or two. So I, I feel like 46 homes would be, we'd be able to sell the lots pretty quickly. So what we're looking to do is, once we get approval hopefully from the city today, we'd like to continue with engineering and hopefully by March, we will be able, or not March, I guess, spring, we'll be able to start the site work and hopefully by summertime, we'll be able to start putting in foundations for a couple of homes. And kind of the idea right now is to do four or five homes at, at a time. But really, I, I, that's just an idea right now, but we just got to see where, where we are in summertime. If that's, you know, a good idea or not, we'll, we'll, we'll just see what the market looks like when we get to summertime. But we've been looking at home size anywhere from 1,000 square feet to about 2,000 square feet. And I'm thinking the price range will be around 250,000 to 350,000, just depending on what type of finishings and obviously sizes. So it'll be home, it'll be somewhat starter homes, but the homes will still have similar finishings such as, you know, custom cabinets, granite quartz countertops, tile bathrooms, wood floors, stack stone, stainless steel appliances, just kind of all the normal finished work that you see nowadays. But yeah, we're looking to build out the whole entire subdivision once the site work is complete. But other than that, that's kind of the, the basic details. And I believe Dave and Hayden with Recent Associates will be able to provide some more in-depth details.
Okay, we invite you obviously to stick around for a little bit to have a chance rebuttal on any opponent testimony that may come up. So do hang on.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the gentleman he mentioned are also, are here as well.
Okay, so we'll just go ahead and.
You can, I mean, they can state their names and addresses and speak as well.
Yes, we can jump on in. I am Hayden Wooton with Recent Associates. Our address is 321 First Avenue East, Suite 3A, Albany, Oregon, 97321. Dave, you want to introduce yourself?
And I'm David Reese with Recent Associates here to assist in the presentation.
I would like to thank Angela for her staff report. I think she really accurately covered all of the decision criteria that are applicable to this case. I would like to point out that any recommendations made under Section 2 of the staff reports are strictly that recommendations. There are several points in there where we deviate from what is accepted in the decision criteria. And we are willing to work with staff to address some of these recommendations during the engineering review. But we would like to limit this discussion strictly to the decision criteria outlined in the municipal code.
And to that, I'd like to, I'd like to add that we understand fully that DSL has recognized a drainage way on the site and a very small wetland. And so Eric has engaged SHOT and Associates, a very renowned wetland biologist who's I've worked with for 25 years. And they are in the process of finalizing their delineation. And we'll be submitting that to DSL for concurrence and to the Corps of Engineers. And that we will prepare a joint fill permit application as well as a mitigation plan. And that's the reason that we have separated the phases on this project. So that Phase Two, which encompasses the area that has been, has been noted as having waterway or wetland, is the area that we will work with on Phase Two, which will allow the time to go through the permitting process. I believe the other thing that I wanted to mention is the Osage Street improvement and the 44th Avenue improvement. We fully understand that we need to have finer access and there has to be adequate structural integrity. So I agree with Joe that 44th Avenue needs to be looked at. However, I would hope that we can look at it together and see if it's, if the entire street needs to be improved. I've driven the street and it's, it's, you know, I think we could take a fire truck out or a dump truck out and do a proof roll and find that it needs some improvement in some areas, especially some widening, but it may not be necessary to have a complete full width. So I just, again, it's something we can work with staff on and we're very, very happy to do that. So with that, I'll give it back to Hayden.
Yep, I think all that's left from us is we've reviewed the conditions of approval. I think we agree with them with noting the change that we're going to remove Condition 10 as it is a repeat. Other than that, Dave and I are available to answer any of your questions.
All right, thank you so much, gentlemen. At this time, we're going to go ahead and invite any of our public that we have either online or on the phone to, to speak in regards to this application. First, we'll invite anybody that is a proponent, that is in favor of this. Do we have anybody online?
We do not have anyone else who has joined the meeting and we don't have anyone who's called in.
Okay. So moving on to the opponent's testimony, if we have anybody that is against this subdivision, or do we have anybody online or anything for that as well?
We, yeah, we have no one, no one else that is on the phone or online.
So due to obligation, I will ask if there's anybody for neutral testimony in regards to this application.
And the answer is the same.
Well, this time normally I would come back to you and invite you to do some rebuttal in response to comment, but as there is no comment, we're gonna.
Did, did the commissioners have an opportunity to ask questions of the engineering firm Recent Associates?
We have not brought that up, but this would be an excellent time in which to do so. So at this time, if there's any commissioners that have any questions for our applicant, this would be a great spot for it.
I do have a question.
Yes.
On the conditions of approval, number four is a part of the ODOT access management program. We had, or Joe had discussed, adding to that point, the existing driveway curb cut in the sidewalk. It's in the staff report on page six, to the east of 45th Avenue along the highway front edge, removing that and replacing it with an ADA curb and sidewalk. Did you have any comments on that part?
We agree with Joe. Should be an ADA sidewalk.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. What are your guys' thoughts and feelings on the 28-foot curb to curb? Do you guys? Anybody?
Yeah, we can touch on that a little bit if you need to.
Yes, that would be great.
Go ahead. Okay. So it is something where if staff is interested in discussing their street ride or their street standards, I think we're willing to do that during the engineering review. For the purposes of this hearing and the decision criteria outlined in the municipal code, we do comply with the TSP and the table outlined in Development Code with the existing street. We utilize that flexibility to create a development we think will provide some quiet streets, some maybe lower impact traffic. And so that was the intent, but I understand if staff is willing to look at something else during engineering review. Dave, do you have anything to add?
Well, I, I think it's, it's always good to look at, you know, first of all, match up your, your transportation plan with your code and then look at your neighborhoods. And as Joe said, the effect of a narrow street, and that's, you know, it is certainly a narrow street, is that the words you use, queuing and traffic calming, and that's always come up in new organization or in neighborhoods where, you know, we migrated from the days of the 50s and the, and the 40s where we had narrow streets and people parked on the side and you queued and you waited as you, you know, for somebody to pass. And, and then when somebody's six-year-old, the tricycle or the, or the volleyball rolls out in the street, you're going slow. As we moved into the 60s and the 70s, we decided that, boy, it would really be nice to have wide open spaces and suburban streets and 40-foot widths and parking both sides and bike lanes. And we found that our neighborhoods had 35 and 45 mile an hour, you know, races, racetracks that went through their neighborhoods and they were less desirable. So having said that, I, you know, we use the minimums and use, or use the minimum that we felt comfortable with for traffic calming. But we wanted to stay in line and in step with a standard subdivision. If we had stepped outside of that and asked for a variance or a modification, then as suggested in the recommendations, we could eliminate the beauty strips, bring the sidewalks into curb type, or eliminate a sidewalk on one side of the street. And this would still allow us to have a 40-foot right-of-way with a 26-foot or a, you know, 26 to 28-foot wide street face to curb to face to curb. So we're flexible to that. What we don't want to do is go back and, and find something. If the, if the commission finds this is the condition that they'd like to impose, we're amenable to it. We do not want to add to right-of-way, which would make the lot smaller and in some cases maybe disadvantage for building. So we're willing to work with it. We understand. I do think if we have no parking and fire lane on at least one side and maybe both sides, we can achieve, we can all achieve the same thing and maybe eliminate one beauty strip and on one side and get ourselves a 24 to 26-foot wide street. So we have lots of flexibility. We're willing to work with staff. We just don't want it to be a sticking point, if that's okay.
Thank you. All right, so I think at this, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for discussion amongst the council at 7:25. All right. So I think at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for discussion amongst the council at 7:25. You guys have anything, any issues?
So I have some questions and comments. We'll start with what was just discussed about the, the width of the roadway. Is that how, if we leave that as a as an unfinished number, how significant is that for you all working with the applicant? I mean, would you, is it better to set a standard even though they say they're willing to work within certain numbers? Because certainly Public Works came out with a number. So I'm not sure where the balance is here between both sides.
Right, because we have different numbers in the, the TSP document versus the design guidelines
Right.
in Chapter 16, the subdivision chapter. Yes, it, it's always good to follow the standards, but we already vary by having two, but we've always been, or tried to be fairly flexible to accommodate our needs, the emergency vehicles, you know, fire district needs, and the developers' needs themselves. It's good to come up with hard and fast numbers, but that takes a significant amount of time and it sometimes can be limiting to unique scenarios. So it's a possibility. I also not having contact with the, the fire chief here with the district. What his thoughts are, the minimal size of widths. Roadways are supposed to be 20, but they're also very familiar with 14, 15, or 16-foot wide widths, you know, in narrow streets.
So, Joe.
So, go ahead.
Can I, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but the TSP has a maximum width for the local streets is what we're saying here.
Correct.
But it has no minimum. But the city standards in the code have a minimum.
In the Chapter 16.
Right. So Chapter 16 is not contradicting the TSP. It is adding to the TSP.
Yeah.
Is, is one way that I would look at it. So that's, that's something for you to take into account.
I mean, when I came to the meeting, I had two things that I wanted to add to the list of recommendations, and this was one. But I hear what the developer is saying, that flexibility in this case is not a bad thing. But I don't want to miss out on the benefits of having some sort of standard to go by. So the 28-foot thing. So I'll just leave that open for commissioners to think about for a moment.
One thing that may, at least that I find helpful is the applicant's original application has a provision. They have this table here that compares street standards.
Right.
One thing that I think is interesting is on the parking width, it says not applicable. And so based on their initial application, and, and this may be something to bring them back to ask them about, but based on the original application, this makes it look like they are intending no parking at all
Right.
on the, on the street. So that's, that's something, I mean, and, and if that, that could be a, a way to say, yeah, then the street should be that width, because if you're not going to have any parking on it, then that, that makes it plenty wide for the traffic that would go along. That's, that's one thing, at least a point for discussion. I don't know what.
So at, at that point, are you saying that the developer has rights to determine after it's turned over to the city street? Or did he have the, it's to where the parking?
The city has the final say on a, on a public street, but it seems that the, that the applicant is proposing here that there be no parking. Is, am I correct there? Has anyone had any other information on that?
That's kind of the direction I thought they were leaning. Yeah.
And so.
This is David Reese, and I know that you've closed the hearing, but.
Hold, hold on, hold on, just a moment.
So at this time, we're just trying to discuss amongst the commission right now. We will reopen the public hearing for the questions that we might have of you and give you the opportunity to respond.
Very good.
So, thank you. Henry.
Well, I think the streets are too narrow. I also have had my opinions, maybe prejudice, whatever, but the beauty strips throughout Sweet Home are not beautiful. They're full of weeds, brown with grass, few rocks. I think it's completely conceivable that the sidewalk and the curb could be fused at one point and eliminate a beauty strip. And I would invite you, all of us, to, as we drive around Sweet Home, ask yourselves the questions, are these beauty strips really beauty? And they're not. It would be if we took care of them, but we don't. So that would be one answer, at least on one side, or maybe both sides, sidewalk, curb, wider street. We have enough streets in Sweet Home. You mentioned First Avenue. I drive it frequently, particularly between Highway 228 and Highway 20. It is definitely a traffic calming area because you often have to pull over, stop, and wait for cars to pass. That can be a plus or a minus. I'm not going to take sides on that one. Okay. I have other things, but it will be on other subjects when we get to them.
Okay. On the street width, I, I know that, like Henry said, omitting the beauty strip in sections makes a lot of sense, especially when there's no clarification of who's doing what, and rarely does irrigation from the front lawn reach a beauty strip. So it does turn brown pretty quick. My concern with the street width right now at 21 feet is there's very little proposed street that is straight. So as soon as you start turning on a radius, people are taking a little more than they normally would width-wise while driving in a straight line, especially where we are when people are towing trailers, towing boats, work trailers. Inevitably, you're going to have somebody in the subdivision that drives a log truck. Not necessarily saying that that's the reason we should be looking at this, but it's very likely. I think not having any parking on the street whatsoever, maybe not so great. And in regards to traffic calming measures, which I think are wonderful, I live on that section of First Avenue, so I get a lot of people that fly down it. Typically, traffic calming measures are in targeted areas and not an entire subdivision. So in that, I'm looking at wider streets. If it's getting rid of the beauty strip to do it, then so be it. And I know at some point it comes down to the dollar because a wider street means a smaller lot usually means a few, fewer lots. So it comes down basically to how much they can make on the project, and I understand that economically. But that's why I think I'd like to see the wider streets. Just because dragging a trailer around a tight cul-de-sac or a tight corner is tough. So.
You know, in all due respect to the developer, we, we try to accommodate developers because they can get more lots
Correct.
out of our sort of property. But I personally would like to see more of a east-west, north-south street design. I would, of course, like to see a difference with naming, but I'm going to come to that later.
Okay. Commissioner Stevens, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I do. I think the street's too narrow. Nobody's even talked about a seven-foot bike lane that's supposed to be required. And if you add that, then that really puts you short. Parking on one side of the street is fine, but if somebody parks on the wrong side of the street where it says no parking because they don't read the signs or they don't care or whatever, then you're in a position where you're impeding emergency vehicles. And so I think it's a bad idea to have no parking on one side of the street. That's all I got to say on the streets until later.
I agree with Henry on the, the beauty strips. I, I don't think they're necessary. If we re-remove those, there's six more feet to the street. That's what makes sense to me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind the design show, you know, kind of saying, you know, we're going to have parking on one side, but I think to go into this assuming that there'll be no parking when, I'm sure the minimum setback to the garage door is going to maintain the 20 feet, which allows basically two cars in the driveway. Based on the lot sizes, I, I doubt that there's going to be RV pads and things like that next to the homes to facilitate recreational vehicles and boats and things like that that people may drag home. So parking's tight. Most subdivisions, driveway to driveway curb cuts are big enough for one good-sized truck or two small cars. So any allowance we can leave for parking with the wider street, I think is the direction that we should lean.
I'd like to make one more comment about, uh, street width. I do agree about the beauty strip, and I guess I kind of already made that point. And then parking, from a practical standpoint, each home is going to have probably two cars. And then if there are visitors and there's no street parking, where are the visitors going to park? There doesn't seem to be accommodation for that. And then with narrow streets and no parking, just doesn't, that all just doesn't fit. So I'm happy to hear that the applicant is willing to work with staff about these particulars. Clearly, there are areas that do need some work. And I would, instead of adding a criteria to the recommendations, I would just strongly urge the applicant to continue to voice flexibility and take our comments into consideration for final decision-making.
I agree. I think it'll be easier on their part if this comes before city council. All right. I hope that doesn't happen. Henry, do you have any you'd like to add, or we can open this back up to the applicant?
Not, not on this topic. Well, yes.
Yes.
I have several other things.
Yeah.
The staff report does make reference to our naming of streets. It's kind of interesting that the avenues in Sweet Home run north and south. In this design, the 45th Avenue actually swings around and is going east and west. And we, I, I feel strongly that we need more consistency in the street naming of Sweet Home. I commented before we started this meeting on missing the big map because you could look on that map and you could see what streets it should line up with approximately and what kind of a name it should have using names that are already in existence in Sweet Home. So let me leave that topic for a moment. It, it looks like from, this is a tentative plat. And I interpret that as meaning that perhaps they're willing to redesign some things. And maybe they could take some of our comments and come back with another design. I know that that's asking a lot, but there's a number of flaws in this one that I think we're all identifying.
So Commissioner Woltius, this is a tentative plat because what they do is they present it and then we go through our conditions of approval. And when they submit their final plat, all those conditions need to be added to it. So that is why it's always a tentative plat. Because they will have to correct anything that the commissioners have come up with today.
And I've already addressed two or three of the other comments that I had, so.
Okay. I mean, street naming is a pretty simple thing down to the end. So, I mean, simply renaming that curved section of 45th as Osage or something like that until it reaches the intersection.
Well, it's, it's kind of hard because the street curves.
Right, but at the intersection, it could change names, which.
You know, if they were more east-west, north-south streets and we had an intersection, it would be unquestionable that this would be 45th Avenue, this would be Nandina or whatever street it is it lines up if we had
Right.
the big city map here, we could, we could identify what that street should probably be named.
Yeah, and I, I do understand that some of the street design is more than likely determined by topography. And there's a lot of modern street design that's saying, you know, you don't want to see all the way into the streets, so they throw a little curve in it, makes it a little quieter, a little more privacy. But yeah, I mean, addressing the street naming, I, I guess at this point, I would assume would be a staff decision for the end, but we would put it in our provisions to look at that. So if you guys have any other questions, invite the applicant back to answer.
Yeah, I got a question, Jeff.
Oh, go ahead.
So what is the feeling on 44th Avenue? Something needs to be discussed about that.
Yeah, the applicant said that they were willing to look at it with the city as far as improving it. Maybe adding some more rock here and there in the areas that it was required. I do think that that would require an onsite visit between our staff engineer, Joe, and the applicant to determine exactly what needs to be done. I know it's tough to coordinate with the fire department as well, but I'm sure Public Works could pop out and talk about areas that need to be addressed, maybe some culverts here and there that need to be just cleaned out before we dump more rock on it. But I know that they did express, you know, willingness to work on that and, and clean that up and improve it. So if you guys want, we'll go ahead and open it back up to the applicant to answer any questions that we might have or that they might want to address. Reopening the hearing at 7:43. So Eric, at this time, you or your, or your company here can, can go ahead and address the thing that they might want to bring up.
Hi, this is David Reese, and I'd like to first of all, make the clarification that we're not opposed to bringing 44th Street or 44th Avenue up to a fire truck or an all-weather surface, as Joe mentioned. I'm just saying that it, it might not need a complete rebuild. It just may need some sections. So that's the, the flexibility there. It's not that I'm disagreeing. We agree. The thing about the, if, if the recommendation for a wider street is, is in agreement with us as well, we would hold the 40-foot right-of-way. And if I heard and I, my straw poll of what the commissioner's comments were, would be that we would remove the beauty strip requirement and bring the two sidewalks to curb type. That provides us with the six feet that would take the street to 27. We don't need the extra half foot on each side for the property lines. There's your 28 feet and we're still in a 28-foot, excuse me, in a 40-foot right-of-way. So we're in agreement with that. And, and can move forward along those, those lines if that's the desire of the commission. We have no objection to that.
Yeah, I think that would go a long way in our community, just to have a little bit wider street. wider street. I do understand, and I'm totally sympathetic with the more neighborhood feel by trying to slow the cars down, but evidence by driving down any street in this town, there's something parked on the road, and it's usually a trailer. I do like your design on, you know, on a personal note, but I'll steer clear of my personal opinion at this point.
I would follow up to say that a 28-foot street in the old days used to be considered narrow. So I like, 28 feet is actually a compromise. 26 has been used, but 28-foot gets your bike lane and gets your parking and gets your travel lanes. So I think it accomplishes everything the commission's looking for and meets our desires as well. And that will allow some on-street parking, and therefore your guests can arrive and have a place to park as well. So we're in agreement with that as if it were to be imposed as a condition or a workout with staff, however you see fit.
Okay. Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to ask our applicant while we have him on? Mr. Stevens, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so if you have a 28-foot road, then you're going to have parking on both sides? Is that what I understand you to say?
That's exactly the, that's the queuing part of the street configuration that could give two 7-foot parking stalls and the 14-foot in the center for, you know, the passing traffic. You're more likely, and it's a possibility, to go ahead and condition one side to be no parking, to allow for additional width, but I don't think it's necessary. It is truly a residential street in a situation which it probably will not even be striped. It'll just be residential streets as they normally are. So I would say parking would be allowed on both sides where, you know, where it's not obstructing a driveway or a fire hydrant or, you know, other appurtenances.
All right, if nobody has anything else for the applicant?
No, we're not through yet.
Oh, go ahead, Henry, sorry.
Sorry about that. I didn't probably hear everything that I should have been hearing, but were we given some assurance that this property to the north could at some future date have access through the water treatment plant?
Yes.
Otherwise, I'm concerned that we're landlocking it.
Green light's on. I still don't know if it's coming through, but yes, that area on the lower section is accessible by easement with the intent of it being that way, back in the original land coordination that we did with the developers to get that water treatment plant at that location.
That's in place.
Yes, it is.
Okay. At this time, we're going to close the public hearing for final discussion amongst the commissioners. So we're going to close the public hearing at 7:48. So it sounds like street width is amenable to 28 feet. The ADA curb cut requirements and recommendations city had at Main Street, 45th. Anyone have anything else they'd like to add or discuss?
So the street width is kind of resolved, but?
Should we put that in there? Yeah, it'll.
Maybe just take it number 10, replace.
So just to repeat, you want to add a condition of approval, number 10, for the curb-to-curb width to be 28 feet?
Correct.
So that would be done by removing the.
Existing number.
Beauty strip?
Yes, removing the beauty strip on both sides to allow for a 28-foot curb-to-curb, And we've already addressed the ADA corners as part of condition number four.
Are we content with the street naming?
I think that's farther down the road with staff.
Right, the street naming will be modified to fit our current standards and we'll work out a, we'll work out a reasonable name within the range. Some ranges are tight.
Line with our current standard.
Right, we will.
That's in the record. And when we talk about street names, I'm talking about 45th, which through a major portion of that is actually east and west, and avenues really should be north and south.
Right.
You're going to work it out.
You've talked about streets, was the fire lane satisfactory? Or did I miss that?
If they're willing to come out and meet with Joe and look on the spots like he said they were willing to, you know, it may not require an entire.
Oh, that's 45th Avenue. I'm talking about the fire lane between their proposed 45th Avenue and Osage. Sorry, and it may not have come up, I thought one of you had mentioned that.
Is it the west section of Osage or 44?
Or are you talking about 44?
I'm talking about, so from 44th, from the intersection of Osage and 44th, east-west connecting to their proposed 45th is a fire lane. And that's the area that the, could have some developed property on the top of the property to the north.
Okay. So can we add in that the road base improvements for the fire right-of-way need to be addressed from Main Street and 44th to the corner of Osage and 44th to the north, and then from Osage to the east to connect the development that it all meets?
So the reason I brought it up is that as it's proposed in their application, it proposes it strictly as a fire lane and a 22-foot width, I think. So if the property to the north of that develops and they put three or four houses on the north side of that fire lane, it becomes rather undersized. So we do need to have a plan in place for what those roads, those houses would have to give up in order to make a street there.
That's where the discussion of the half-street.
So that's whether you would want them to, in lieu of a fire lane, put in half-street improvements instead. Joe, what are your thoughts on the best way to make it developable for the other side?
Because of the limited space at the top of the hill there, north of the property line, it would be best if.
Sorry. Don't breathe on your mic. Yeah, don't breathe on the mic. It would probably be best if the accessway at least is curb. Pedestrian link sideways, sidewalk, for example, could be in an easement area. Just inside the private property. Otherwise, what happens is it squeezes that whole assembly southward off that north property line, which puts some size constraints on Lot 10, I believe it is, and makes that one a little bit more difficult to put together. If it's with a fire lane that has no parking on either side and the curb-to-curb width in that 22-foot section is more than the 20 that's required, the accessibility for pedestrian access, which is also required, could be in an area beyond that line, beyond that property lane line. And it's not the first time we've done that at 27th Avenue. But nonetheless, looking at, trying just to advocate how much space there is at the top of that hill, there's minimal, and neither would I advocate pushing everything southward and perhaps making Lot Number 10 too small. I would, I would look at, in the long term, a modified version of what we did on 27th Avenue, which is the roadway within the property line and intermittent sidewalk segments in easements in order to have that narrow assembly, that narrow street assembly. And it's a weird little corner of the world there, because on one side, you've got a pretty steep drop-off, and the other side is a fairly small, irregularly shaped lot. So you have to kind of thread the opportunity there, if you will.
So.
So did I ask that or not?
What I'm asking is, where's the happy medium of maximizing the potential for access for the northern, to make sure that the property to the north still has access, but keep that lot buildable and have a street that's not ridiculous?
Right. And Lot 10 in itself, right, it's, I would think that, oh, let's see, 95 feet, that's 75, 73 minus a setback for a house footprint, ouch. I would be looking at something near on about an alleyway, because alleyways are 20 feet wide at the small end, 24, 25 at sometimes. And they tend to be a shared use of pedestrians and vehicle traffic, and so that might accommodate that need. Otherwise, you end up with 10 feet of sidewalks on either side of a 20-foot fire lane, so you've got 30 feet to squeeze the north property line of 10, as well as the north property line of Lot Number 9, actually. I would, the happy medium would be the, I'm sorry I'm dragging on so long, but the happy medium would be the fire lane, no parking on either side, the sidewalk in the easement area on Lot 10 and a sidewalk in an easement area of the adjacent property next door. Is there a, is there a sidewalk on there now? There's only a sidewalk along the east side of Lot 9. There was, there is a proposed sidewalk on the west side of Lot 10, along the 44th Avenue.
Right.
Because in the subdivision format, the perimeter of a subdivision is as important as the interior streets, so all perimeters of a subdivision get developed. And therein lies the transition between the half-street on 44th Avenue, the remainder of 44th Avenue down to the Main Street intersection being well-packed rock as a base. And yes, I agree with Dave that not the entire road needs to be rebuilt, because we have a sewer line under part of it and two relatively new water lines through there. So there's a bit of trench rock and base that's built, so a portion of it may need more strengthening, but definitely not a full street surface.
All right. But as it stands, the proposed, the proposed street, that fire lane does not have any sidewalks, so you have Lot 10 that has sidewalks on 44th Avenue disconnected from the sidewalks on the other part of the, so you have basically one lot that is boff by itself with its sidewalk that goes nowhere.
Right.
But doesn't connect to the other sidewalks. Just to recap, that's where things stand.
I think the sidewalk should connect.
Down the unimproved section of Osage? Next to Lots 10 and 9?
Yeah, on the north side of Lots 9 and 10.
And on the south side of the 22-foot emergency fire access easement.
So I've put it up on the maps on the screen so you can see it.
Right. The sidewalks on the north side of the property line proper of Lot 10 and 9 should not be the responsibility of this applicant, in my view. That's on the property of the adjacent owner, and they can build that at their time. It would only be the south side of the easement walk.
Right, but is the south side of the easement is the north side of Lots 10 and 9?
Kind of. The lot actually extends all the way to the north property line of the subdivision itself.
Okay.
Because that, the fire lane is an easement.
Understandable. So we can propose a, a recommendation for a sidewalk connecting 44th Avenue to the proposed subdivision along the south edge of the easement that abuts Lots 9 and 10.
Joe, are you suggesting it should be on the north side of the easement, which would be the actual edge of the property, so they don't have a sidewalk 20 feet into their property?
No, because.
I would put it in the middle of this proposed final street.
Yeah, it would, it would be alongside the curb of that fire lane, on the south side of that, south curb of the fire lane.
Where the edge of the gravel road is right now.
Well, the edge of the gravel road will be improved to curb and gutter and sidewalks on 44th. But as you turn the corner and come down the fire lane to the rest of the development, that would be a sidewalk along the curb of the fire lane.
But is a sidewalk on the fire lane to the north or the south?
South.
Yes, on the south.
It's the south edge of the easement, which on the drawing, you know, can be interpreted as a lot line, but it's not. A lot line is actually the one to the, to the north, which is the center of the future street. And it's the edge of their commitment for this one, which is a basic half-street improvement through road base.
Well, if I'm reading this right, it would be better to have the sidewalk to the south rather than have a gravel driveway or the gravel fire lane with a sidewalk on the north side. It only makes sense to me to have it on the south.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, maybe I'm misunderstanding. I'm sorry.
Any clarification is welcome. So are we adding the recommendation of installing sidewalks on the south side of the easement connecting 44th Avenue with the new subdivision along lots 9 and 10?
I would support that inclusion.
That helps our overall scheme of pedestrian-friendly improvements since we don't. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add before we look for a motion?
Commissioner? Chair?
I will remind you at this time, unfortunately, we are closed for public comment and it is discussion amongst the council at this time.
However, you're, you're adding a condition without asking the applicant to comment. And so I'm, I just want to say we're in favor of it. That's all.
Thank, thank you. You had me scared for a minute. I was, I was thinking through my head.
That's okay.
Sneaked it in and we'll, we'll go for that.
Okay.
Based on discussion, recommendations and amendments to existing recommendations, does anybody want to make a motion?
Before you make a motion, I just want to clarify, we have a new number 10 and then we're adding number 14.
Correct.
And then the number four.
Okay, please specify what the new number 10 and 14 is, please.
Okay. Recommendation number 10 is to maintain the 28-foot curb face to curb face road width by removing the requirements for the beauty strip while still maintaining the 40-foot right-of-way. And 14 is the installation of sidewalks along the easement of Osage, along the south edge of the easement, along lots 9 and 10, connecting the new development to 44th Avenue. And the amendment on four was just to add the verbiage of the ADA corner requirement
And to eliminate the existing driveway curb cut on the highway.
It's up to you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve application SD 20-02, including the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report with the amendments we just spoke of, adopting the findings of fact listed in Section 3 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This time I'll turn it over to Angela for a roll call vote.
Can you roll call vote, Chairman Parker?
Aye.
Chairman, Commissioner Woltius?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
The motion said Section 3. Is it not Section 4?
Our current motion and second at this time is to approve the application with the modifications to number 10, removing the old one, adding in the curb-to-curb width, adding Recommendation 14 of the sidewalks along the easement of Osage, and four, clarifying in the verbiage of the addition of the ADA corners at 45th and Main.
Yeah, I understand that, Jeff. I thought that the recommendation was for the conditions in Section 3, and I, isn't that supposed to be Section 4?
Oh, you are correct.
So maybe we better vote over.
Just make it note real quick. Roll call vote, Chairman Parker?
Aye.
Were you modifying the motion?
No, just clarification on the section.
Okay. Commissioner Woltius?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Journey?
Aye.
Commissioner Unger?
Aye.
The motion passes. Five ayes, two absent.
All right. Thank you very much, Eric and your team.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Moving on. Application ZMA 2004, the applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of approximately 87,962 square feet located approximately 300 feet north of Main Street and 9th Avenue intersections. Sweet Home Oregon, tax lot ID is 13S01E31BD, tax lot 401. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the highway commercial C1 zone to the residential high-density R2 zone. Proposed change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. The Planning Commission will hold the public hearing to make the recommendation to the city council. City council will hold a public hearing to decide on this application. Application ZMA 20-04 is being filed simultaneously with application PD 2002. Application PD 2002 is pending the approval of application ZMA 20-04. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker in the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. So commissioners, does anyone have any personal bias regarding this application?
No.
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 Commissioner Stevens, no.
Okay. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
Commissioner Stevens, no.
Any ex parte information?
No. No.
Commissioner Stevens, no.
Okay, at this time, we'll turn it over to staff for their report.
Okay, just a note before I get started. So, application ZMA 20-04 and PD 20-02 are related, however, they need to be decided on separately. These are two separate applications, although the attachments and some of the notes are exactly the same for both. I just wanted to bring that up. So we're starting with ZMA. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of approximately 87,962 square feet, 1.96 acres, located approximately 300 feet north of the Main Street and 9th Avenue intersection, Sweet Home, Oregon 97386. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from highway commercial C2 zone to the residential high-density R2 zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation of highway density residential. Based on review of the FEMA firm maps dated September 29, 2010, the subject property is in the 100-year flood plain. Ames Creek is located along the southern boundary of the subject property. The subject property contains a wetland according to the local wetlands inventory. The applicant provided a wetland delineation report that is included in the packet. The subject property has frontage along 9th Avenue through a private access easement on Lot 303. The subject property has access to city water and sewer services. Public water and sanitary sewer service will be provided to each parcel. City maintenance access will be in a utility easement over the driveway area. Connections are available in 9th Avenue. The subject property has frontage along 9th Avenue through the private access easement. Based on the applicant's statements, the subject property is anticipated to be developed with a seven-lot planned development. And staff finds that the utilities and services are efficiently provided to serve the proposed use of a planned development unit or other potential uses in the proposed zoning district. Based on the Lynn County 2017 aerial photograph, the area is surrounded by low-density residential, high-density residential, central commercial and highway commercial lots. The applicant states a desire to develop a seven-lot development on the property. Based on the findings, the proposed zoning plan designation would be consistent with the Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan. Addressing public comments regarding the zone change, I will be addressing the comments that pertain strictly to the zone change criteria only, some pertain to both. There were concerns that single-family dwellings are not allowed in the commercial highway C2 zone. This is the reason the applicant is proposing the zone map amendment to residential high-density R2 zone. Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan designates the subject property as residential high-density, which does allow single-family residents. 17.28020A, a use permitted outright in R1 zone. And 1724020, which is the R1 zone, single-family dwellings are outright permitted. The applicant is not required to reach out, they had concerns about them to surrounding property owners. The applicant is not required to reach out to the neighboring property owners. The notice of public hearing that is sent to the neighboring property owners is all that is required by the state of Oregon. There was concern, there was a comment about the property being sold. I personally spoke to the property, the property owner via phone, and he told me that an offer was made on the property, but he turned it down. He has no plans to sell the property as of our phone conversation and advised me to move forward with the public hearing. Based on the findings listed in Section 3 of this report, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve this application. Since the request is for a zone change, staff has not recommended any conditions of approval. So motion after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the planning commission's options include the following. Move to recommend that the city council approve application ZMA 20-04, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report. Move to recommend that the city council deny application ZMA 20-04. You must specify reasons. Number three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or other. Any questions for staff?
Can I get a question?
Yes, sir.
Commercial property, do we have tons of it or not?
Most of the commercial property in the city is along Main Street and there are commercial properties available. The only thing that makes this property any different than any of the available ones is that it's off of Main Street and that's the only thing I can think of. But there, there are numerous commercial properties that are available that are not developed.
I have a question of the staff. Angela, I think you said that the property was no longer for sale?
It never was. It never was for sale. The owner never had it up for sale.
That's contrary to what, one of the comments are in here.
Correct. Which is why I called to make sure that, just in case it got sold, whether we needed to move forward, and he said it was not up for sale. There was just an offer given to him.
So the offer was presented and he didn't act upon it?
Correct.
So I'd like to make a comment. One of the, one of the adjacent property owners made a point of distinguishing between residential property, I mean, commercial property in the core of Sweet Home versus other commercial property and that there was a, I don't know what you call it, a notion in the community that that core commercial property should stay as is. And the argument was made that this particular property being a part of that, that the zone change should not go through to honor that previous notion. My question is, given the location of this property, how could it be developed as commercial given the lack of access? Given that it's on the north side of Ames Creek, between Ames Creek and the, and the railroad right-of-way, those are pretty fixed boundaries. And so I'm just posing these questions. What does this property have to offer in the community? The fact that it's in the commercial zone, okay, but really, on a realistic basis, is this going to be commercially viable other than possibly as a planned development? So I just proposed that question.
So typically, the downtown core is the area that's Zone C1. This is not Zone C1, never was to my knowledge, Zone C1. It is in close proximity to some areas that are Zone C1 and that people would consider the, the downtown core. I pulled up a Google map of the area and you can see right here is 9th Avenue. Let me see. And then here is Steelhead Way. This is the general vicinity, correct? You have commercial activities along here. They, they actually, these particular commercial activities tend to be more of a, closer to a highway commercial development than they do a downtown commercial development. The downtown commercial developments tend to be right along here. By losing this, it's on the other side of Ames Creek. And so the only way you would get a, a downtown commercial type development in there is if you either put in some road infrastructure to connect it to Main Street or had some sort of paths or something, I'm, I'm not sure really what that would look like. And so it's, it was kind of surprising to me to read that comment. I don't understand it because it, it, it doesn't have, if you are, if you go onsite, it doesn't have the downtown commercial character to the property itself or to any of the neighboring properties. So it's, I'm kind of mystified, I guess, by that comment because it, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to me.
So I wanted to bring this up because the property owners surrounding this property are very against the zone change. So I wanted to make sure that we had some discussion to honor their requests and put it in a context of what action we might take, either pro or con.
Right. And when it comes to the property owners to the south, I mean, there are commercial properties to the south and, and some of it is quite vacant. And so there's, there's room for development there. And I would, if it's any of the property owners to the south that are complaining, I would suggest that they develop their properties because they, they, they definitely have some potential there. But as for this property, I'm not sure how it fits into that. But it is good to at least examine it and discuss it, make sure we're not rubber-stamping something.
Just a comment, but if any of you have been to Silverton, I think it was Silverton, where there is a where there is a stream that writes, goes right through the middle of town. The Chamber of Commerce building is right there, which is an old restored railroad facility and little park. They've got a bridge across the stream, and it has the potential of being developed into something kind of nice, as well as the south side of the street by the museum. I mean, we, we've, we've really got opportunities there if we just have the vision to see it.
Yeah, I, I do know what you're talking about. More Silverton, though, has, where the stream bisects almost the entire city, so there's a lot of infrastructure and bridges available and things like that to help facilitate commercial on both sides. This seems to be kind of a landlocked area. Ames Creek goes underneath the highway right there by Napa and the storage units, and then, from this point, basically, it's not very long before it rejoins the river.
And if I can make a comment, I don't know about the Silverton screen, the stream, but Ames Creek is actually a protected water of the United States, because it, it's a fish-rearing tributary of the South San Yum, so there's a lot stricter requirements on Ames Creek. I don't know about the Silverton Creek, I don't know anything about it, but Ames Creek and Wiley Creek here in town have some pretty heavy restrictions to them, so, which is another, could be another deterrent for, it is, but with the wetlands, and yeah, so it, I guess it, it kind of depends on what would go in there as to what would be approved. Just to clarify, there are a little bit more restrictions since probably what's in Silverton.
That's, that's a good point, because i- if this were to be developed in a, in a downtown commercial kind of situation, that 50-foot riparian zone would be basically a deal killer, I think, for something like that. Yeah.
Well, and if you look at the, if you look at the confirmation of the property, quite a bit of the south side is taken up by that 50-foot riparian setback anyway. So, and it forces the developer to face the houses to the north, to the railroad right-of-way, so there are unique characteristics here.
When I looked at the application, it seemed pretty straightforward to me that the, this property in the comprehensive plan is zoned residential, so the question for this application is to change the zoning from the commercial to the residential, and I, based on that, I think that that's what we need to do.
Chairman?
Yes?
I also think that we tend to change zones and the compa- plan map just because somebody asked for it. And if we've given some thought to that in the past, I think somebody asking for a change has to have a pretty compelling reason to ask us for a change, that, that we just don't hand it out like ice cream cones.
Correct.
Enough said.
So, in this case, the comprehensive plan does, designation is high-density residential, so this property's zoning designation is a holdover from when, from before the comprehensive plan had that designation for the property. So, it's, it's a, just in response to your comment, it's not, this wouldn't be changing the zone just willy-nilly, it's because of, that's what's dictated by the comprehensive plan, and they're asking for it to be brought into compliance with that comprehensive plan.
All right. If anybody has any other questions for staff, we can open the public hearing. All right, open the public hearing at 8:30. Do we have our applicant online or on the phone?
So, I have not heard from the applicant, I sent an email, so we do, currently do not have the applicant on the phone or the property owner.
Okay. I'm not sure if that's a, if we got our wires crossed somewhere with the, with the virtual meeting or what, but we haven't connected, we haven't been able to connect with them.
All right.
And we don't have any other, anybody else logging in either.
There's no phone or?
Nobody on the phone, nobody visit, coming in as a guest.
All right, well, we will go through the motions, then. At this time, I invite anyone that's proponent, anyone in favor of the application to come forward and comment. Anyone opposed to the application? Anyone with neutral testimony? All right, no need to go for rebuttal, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:31, discussion amongst council. If you have anything else they'd like to, thought of in the last minute?
I don't have any more discussion.
Henry, anything else you'd like to throw in there?
Well, I have to admit, at one point in my life, I'd actually sketched out a little park-like setting involving Ames Creek and what used to be Marie's Ceramics and, and the auto parts store as an entryway into Sweet Home, and I, I guess I'm kind of a dreamer. I'd like to see us postpone this hearing.
Based on?
Well, I'm also in a little bit confused about Angela's comments, why one party would have said that they had made an offer and the other party says it was never for sale.
I think, I think that comes down to the party saying that they had made an offer, which they had, but the property owner saying that he never accepted it. He may have received an offer, but he never acted upon.
The co- the commenter that made that comment made a lot of allegations, a lot of comments that have proven to be not entirely correct, and, and that suggesting that they bought the property has been proven false. So, I can only guess at the motivation for that, but it, their, their claim that they own the property or are soon to own the property is, doesn't hold any water.
And a postponement needs to be based on criteria?
I do agree, Henry. I'm, I'm a dreamer as well, and, and little park-like settings like that would be kind of, you know, welcoming and picturesque, and at some point, I guess, maybe we could go before city council and recommend that they start looking at setting monies aside for park acquisition or properties for it. Unfortunately, at this time, I don't think.
I think, I think there's still room for that on the areas that are closer to Main Street. I think this is still far enough away from Main Street that it's, it's, it wouldn't affect that dream, and I, I would love for something like that to happen too. But I think, and I think there's still potential for that, but this particular property, I think, is far enough away that it doesn't really affect it.
Well, we're dealing with two different properties, but the potential of the museum, the auto parts store, old Marie's Ceramics, the stream, and the creek has a lot of potential.
Well, moving forward, anybody like to make a motion to approve or deny application?
I'll make a motion to recommend the city council approve application ZMA 20-04, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report.
A second.
Okay, well, this time, we'll turn it over to Angela for a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote, Chairman Parker?
Aye.
Commissioner Walthius?
No.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Journey?
Aye.
Commissioner Unger?
Aye.
The motion passes, four ayes, one nay, two absents.
So, moving on to application PD 20-02, the applicant is requesting a planned development overlay zone on approximately 87,962 square feet. Piece of property, access to the subject property from Ninth Avenue will be through a proposed access easement across tax lot 303, which is also owned by the same applicant. The applicant is proposing to develop seven single-family lots on the subject property. Through the planned development process, the applicant is proposing to modify the minimum lot size, minimum lot width, front setback, and street yard setback standards shown in the attached site plans. A planned development zone is an overlay zone that can be applied in conjunction with any other zone designation, although this overlay designation permits modifications to the site development standards of the underlying zone standards. It does not permit changes in use specified by the underlying zone. Sweet Home Municipal Code 1748 dash, or dot 020 has a proposed tract A, which will protect environment, environmentally sensitive areas of the site and, and provide common open-space Planned development, the subject property is in the highway C1 zone. Application P220-02 is pending the approval of application ZMA 20-04, amending the zone designation from highway commercial C1 zone to the comprehensive plan map designation residential high-density R2 zone. Application ZMA 20-04 will be filed simultaneously. I will turn it over to staff for their report. Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute. My little blurb. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Do any of the commissioners have any personal bias regarding this application?
No.
No.
Commissioner Stevens, no.
All right, any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
No, no.
Mr. Stevens, no.
Any ex parte information?
No.
No.
Commissioner Stevens, no.
All right, at this point, I will turn it over to Angela for our staff report.
The applicant is requesting a planned development overlay zone on an approximately 87,962 square foot, 1.96 acre property. Access to the subject property from Ninth Avenue will be through a proposed access easement across tax lot 303, which is also owned by the applicant. The applicant is proposing to develop a seven, develop seven single-family lots on the subject property. Through the planned development process, the applicant is proposing to modify the minimum lot size, minimum lot width, front setback, and street yard setback standards shown on the attached site plans. The planned development zone is an overlay zone that can be applied in conjunction with the other zone designation. Although this overlay designation permits modifications to the site development standards of the underlying zone standards, is, it does not permit changes to the uses specified in the underlying zone. Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.48020. As proposed, tract A will protect environmentally sensitive areas of the site and provide common open space amenities for the planned development. Based on the review of the FEMA firm maps dated September 29, 2010, the subject property is in the 100-year floodplain. Ames Creek is located along the southern boundary of the subject property. Subject property contains a wetland according to the let, the local wetlands inventory. The applicant provided a wetland delineation report that is included in the packet. The subject property has frontage along Ninth Avenue through a private access easement on Lot 303. Subject property has access to city water and sewer services. The proposed planned development would be accessed from a private street that is proposed to include 24 feet of pavement, six-inch curbs, and five-foot sidewalk, and a turnaround meeting fire code standards. The applicant is proposing all utility facilities underground. The city engineer reviewed the proposed street design and found that the proposed street meets city standards. Through the planned development process, the applicant is requesting to modify the R2 minimum lot size standards. Attachment B indicates that proposed lot size ranges from 3,000 zero, 3,019 square feet to 5,340 square feet. The applicant is proposing to modify the minimum front yard setbacks from 20 feet to 10 feet, and the street yard setbacks from 15 feet to 10 feet through the planned development process. All other standard setbacks to the R2 zone will be maintained on each of the proposed lots. The minimum dwelling size in the R2 zone is 720 square feet. Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.28080. All buildings, except for single-family attached dwellings, shall occupy not more than 60% of the lot area. Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.28060. Staff finds that the applicant would meet the setback and lot requirements with the minimum building size of 720 square feet. With the minimum building size, lot coverage for Lot 1 would be approximately 18%, Lot 2 would be approximately 24%, Lot 3 would be approximately 22%, Lot 4 would be approximately 13%, Lot 5 would be approximately 19%, Lot 6 would be approximately 21%, and Lot 7 would be approximately 21%. The applicant is proposing private street access through a private, proposing private street assessed through a private access easement on tax lot 303. Per the staff engineers' comments above, the proposed driveway apron will be reconstructing the sidewalk and curb area to a new walkway for pedestrians on Ninth Avenue. As a private street, the roadway may be named as desired by the owner and approved by the community development director. However, the name cannot be Nandina Street or Ninth Avenue, and the street name suffix would be Place, Trail, Whale, Way, or Path. The address range for the proposed lot will be the 800 block of that named roadway. The manual uniform traffic control drive standards for signing private driveway names is white letters on blue background. There's a Sweet Home Municipal Code separation requirement between offset public streets of 75 feet, but code does not have a criteria to apply the private planned development driveways. Regardless, the separation would not comply with any potential standard, because the separation is barely over five, five and a half feet. Access driveways outside the access approval jurisdiction of the Albany and Eastern Railroad of 155, 155 feet for 25 mile an hour roadways. Staff finds that the proposed planned development is a natural resource zone, 100-year floodplain and a 500-year floodplain, and contains wetlands that are inventoried in the Sweet Home local wetlands inventory or the National Wetlands inventory map. The applicant has proposed tract A to protect environmentally sensitive areas of the state of the site and provide common open space amenities for the planned development. Per the Department of State Lands' comments, there is an approved delineation for lots 300 and 401, WD 2019-0069. The proposed parcels would meet, or would need to comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws in effect at the time of the development. Flood hazard area regulations 15.12, the subject property is located with a, in a 100-year floodplain. The applicant states that the plans for each single-family home are to be determined, and the applicant would obtain development permits and construct any structures in compliance with the special flood area standards. Utilities and facilities such as sewer, gas, electrical, and water systems shall be located and constructed, constructed to minimize flood damage. Natural Resources Chapter 17.72, the proposed planned development is located adjacent to a portion of Ames Creek, and a wetland is located on the property. The standards in 17.72 are applicable. Ames Creek requires a 50-foot buffer from the top of bank. The applicant provided a surveyed site plan reviewed by a qualified biologist that shows the 50-foot buffer. The site map indicates that the single-family home sites will be located outside the 50-foot buffer. The applicant indicates that the road will encroach into the 50-foot buffer. Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.72050 allows certain activities to be accepted from the riparian zone, including streets, roads, driveways, or paths. The proposed lot has limited access because of Ames Creek to the south and the railroad to the north. In addressing, in addressing the public comments regarding the planned development, and again, I'm only addressing the comments per criteria, not the opinions, concerns that single-family dwellings are not allowed in the commercial highway zone, we've already kind of covered this, but this is the reason the applicant is proposing the Zone Map Amendment to the residential high-density R2 zone. The Sweet Home Com- The Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan designates the property, subject property, as high, high-density residential, which does allow single-family residents. Concerns that the proposed, proposed development encroaches on the riparian buffer. The applicant submitted a wetland delineation report that was approved by the Department of State Lands. You can reference the comment in section two of the staff report. Map P2 provided by the applicant submitted, submitted by the applicant shows the riparian buffer represented by a dashed line. There are no structures proposed within that buffer. Staff recommends that the applicant contact the VFW regarding the private park abutting the proposed development. The VFW has concerns about trespassing on the parking, on the property if there are no barriers between the property. Staff recommends the following conditions of approval. The final configuration of proposed parcels one through seven shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application. The final configuration of proposed parcel one shall be approximately four thousand and fifty-seven square feet. Proposed parcel two shall be approximately three thousand and nineteen square feet. Proposed parcel three shall be approximately three thousand three hundred and sixteen square feet. Proposed parcel four shall be approximately five thousand three hundred and forty square feet. Proposed parcel five shall be approximately three thousand eight hundred and two square feet. Proposed parcel six shall be approximately three thousand three hundred and fifty-two square feet. And proposed parcel seven shall be approximately three thousand four hundred and eighty-two square feet. The single-family home setbacks shall be a minimum of ten feet, from the front yard, and street yard setbacks shall be ten feet. The applicant shall provide each property with its own water and sewer services. The access and utility easements shall be clearly identified. The new property line shall be situated so that all buildings and structures comply with the yard setback requirements proposed in the planned development application or, and/or the setback requirement of the R2 zone. Application PD twenty-dash-zero-two is pending the approval of application ZMA twenty-dash-zero-four, amending the zoning designation from highway commercial C1 zone to the comprehensive plan map designation of residential high-density R2 zone. Application ZMA twenty-dash-zero-four will be filed simultaneously. Within one year from the date of approval of the tentative plan, the applicant shall prepare a final plat in conformance with the approval of the tentative plan. The provisions of the Sweet Home Municipal Code, Sweet, Sweet Home Municipal Code sixteen-point-two-zero, and the provisions of ORS Chapter ninety-two, the applicant shall submit the final plat for city review as required by Sweet Home Municipal Code sixteen-point-two-zero. The final plat shall include the information listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code sixteen-point-two-zero-zero-three-zero. Approval of a development plan shall be valid for three-year period from the date of approval without documented progress to complete implementation of an approved development plan. At its discretion or without a public hearing, the commission may extend the approval one time for a period not to exceed two additional years. Upon development of the proposed parcels, the property owner shall construct all applicable street, sidewalk, and storm drain improvements that are required, and according to the provision of the Sweet Home Municipal Code at the time of development. All public improvements must comply with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code at the time of development. Development of the subject parcels shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal requirements.
That concludes my statement. Are there any questions from commissioners?
I have a question about the lot sizes. Because they're, they're very small, and you, you talked about, the requirements for the house size on these lots was a minimum of seven fifty?
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty, and do we know whether the developer is planning to build what-sized houses?
So, for this application process, they don't have to show us the size of the houses, as long as they are a minimum of seven hundred and twenty square feet, and they can meet the setback requirements that are approved by you, then they will submit all of that during the building process.
So, I'm just curious too, on some of the, on some of the verbiage, it keeps referring to yard setback, yard setback. Are, this isn't addressing setbacks to a garage door that are currently twenty feet?
So, with the planned development overlay zone, they are allowed, correct me if I'm wrong. They are allowed to deviate from the standard of the, like, setbacks. The, you know, lot sizes, that type of thing. They cannot deviate from the use, the outright permitted and the conditional use, but they can deviate from the rest of it. So, they can, so it can be, they can go from twenty feet to ten feet, which was the property line to the house.
The idea behind a planned development is that you take an entire larger area, and, and because of, and by giving more open space and these areas that are not developed, you can, the developer can say, "Look, I'm going to leave all this undeveloped and leave this open space, but in exchange, I want to have the overall density be the way we measure it, rather than each individual lot be, meet a certain standard." And so, that's why you do a planned development, is that it gives the developer some flexibility, and it ultimately gives you a, a product to the community that is desirable because you have these mitigating circumstances, like the open space and the riparian areas and all that, that would make it feel like it's not as crowded as it is, because it really isn't. It's, you may have small lots, but you have plenty of open space to mitigate that.
I guess my concern is the, a ten-foot setback, if, if applied in this way, it's far, as far as saying a yard setback and not a property or a structure footprint, something like that, it just seems ten feet is not adequate to have a driveway to park your car, to get it off the street. And having a tight area, I know it's got some kind of a modification of a hammerhead emergency surfaces to turn around and things like that. But it doesn't seem like ten feet is adequate to encourage people to not park on the street and not plug it up.
Mr. Chairman, on one of the page sets, there's a image, let me take a look at this thing here. Huh, the, the section that doesn't, that shows the page number didn't respond. Probably, yes, page eighty-seven, yeah. That has some driveway aprons indicated that extend past that ten-foot setback, and one of them, Lot Seven, has a call-out note for the typical size of eighteen by twenty-four, by twenty. So, it, it looks as if, just because it's a rectangle, that it's an eighteen-foot wide driveway by twenty feet deep behind the sidewalk. And it's the only place that I could see on there where it would show anything. They had kind of unusual places to have driveway aprons, but probably have different sizes and shapes of homes. But, anyway, it, it appears that for the driveway of having at least twenty feet behind the sidewalk is how they're accommodating that.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Yeah.
The minimum lot area for a single-family dwelling in R2 zone is five thousand square feet. They're proposing seven units. Only one of them is greater than five thousand square feet. Most of them are significantly smaller. Did they?
The, the reason for that, again, is because this is not a typical subdivision, this is a planned development. And so, with a planned development, you can basically say, "Look, our density overall for the whole area is, is within the parameters, but each individual lot is smaller because we have all of this open space that is, that is either a part of the community." Like, if you look on that page eighty-seven, there's a playground at one end. There's kind of park amenities that are available to the residents of these properties, but they are not on any individual's lot. So, it's, it's essentially shared open space.
Who takes care of the shared open space?
I understand, if I understand, this one would have an HOA that would be, it's a, it, there would be an HOA that would maintain the, it's a private drive. All of the open space and the, any amenities for that neighborhood would all be the responsibility of the HOA.
I understand that they can make the lot sizes smaller in a planned development, but making them this small is, I just think it's ridiculous. I mean, we're trying to, we've got Josh coming in about every other month, trying to combine properties or differences on property to three thousand square feet, and here they're asking us to grant all these properties that are three thousand square feet. It just doesn't make sense to me.
To my knowledge, with other requests for smaller lots, they don't have any open space or any, any community amenities that they are using to mitigate that. Again, this is, this is basically pointing out that there are, there are things that we want to preserve in that stream corridor, and that's why they're, it's justified. So, plant, planned developments, I, I would encourage you to look at the criteria for, for a planned development and, and determine if that, if it meets the criteria for the planned development. The, it is a, a difference, we don't get very many planned developments, but they can be very effective in creating a beautiful neighborhood that respects the, the natural amenities that are present there.
And just to add also, they will meet the minimum requirements with the minimum structure of seven hundred and twenty square feet. So, although some of the parcels are smaller than normal, they still will be able to meet the remainder of the requirements based on that.
So, I've had experience in, in a larger urban area of seeing a planned development that goes by different names, patio homes, or structures where the homes are actually adjacent to each other, but they're individual. And there's a small little, like, courtyard that we would say is big enough to turn around in, but, but the open space that's provided as part of the development is part of what's made it attractive to people to buy into that, and we're just not used to that kind of land use application here. We're still in the single-family home on a particular-sized lot. And maybe I'm stretching my recollection to this a little bit more, because at first I was, I was having similar responses as some of the rest of you, "This is so small, and oh my gosh, look at where it is," et cetera. But taking the concept of planned development, that this is actually a unit, even though there are separate homes within it, kind of frames it differently and makes it a little bit more comprehensible.
One may, one way that you may want to think about it is, this is in the R2, if, if with the zone change, this would be the high-density R2 zone. And so, you could think about this as a deconstructed apartment building, where you, you have the same density as a, as an apartment, or the same size units as an apartment building, but you have kind of moved them apart from each other. And so, you are going to have different, it is going to be smaller. This is not going to be a neighborhood for somebody who wants a yard. It's not going to be a neighborhood for somebody who owns a boat. This is going to be a neighborhood for somebody who wants the natural amenities around them, but doesn't want to have to take care of them. And, because that's what the HOA would be doing.
So, this is more similar to kind of the rebirth of the cottage cluster?
Mm-hmm, you could think of it as a cottage cluster, too.
Well, HOAs historically don't work. And this is going to be a private street, which means the residents are going to be on the hook for maintaining this private street along with everything else. And I visualize a bunch of little houses with some carports, and I don't visualize people with big incomes living there, so I don't visualize people having the money to pay for street repairs, et cetera. And maybe that's just, I'm looking at it wrong, but that's what I visualize.
Unfortunately, none of those criteria are, are really something that we can use to determine whether it's approved or not. I mean, those aren't the income level of, of future homeowners, or, or whether they, their HOA works or not is, is not something that we can, we can hold against them. HOAs do function in plenty of places. They may not function, they may not have functioned here yet, but I do know there's at least one. I believe Councilor Gerson lives and has an HOA, and it seems to function. So, it's just a matter of how they're structured and so forth.
And there will be requirements from DSL specifically for the nature area. They will have to comply with the rules regarding the wetlands and the riparian zone, so they can't just leave that as is. There will be rules and requirements for that that will be added into their HOA. I'm assuming it'll be added into their HOA, but there will be rules toward that part of it.
There is a HOA on Mimosa over there off of Forty-Ninth, and, yeah, it's a beautiful neighborhood.
Anybody else have any questions or comments or staff or anything they'd like to discuss? I think, like Ava said, you know, this is something that we're just not used to in our area. And I think that we kind of have to start being open to more things, different ideas. I mean, I know the tiny house movement is, is huge everywhere, and it's going to trickle down to see us. I think this type of cottage cluster might be a nice or slow transition for us into that kind of thing. On a personal note, I would like to see the lots bigger, but, you know, it doesn't always work out that way geographically, especially here with the riparian zones elevation. So...
Would be nice to hear from the applicant.
Okay, so, at this time, nine oh three, we're going to open the public hearing for any testimony. If we have our applicant online or on the phone, we invite them to speak.
I wish we did. I thought we'd have, at le, have more people in this tuning in.
Yeah, based on the stuff.
We tested everything before the meeting, and it was all functioning.
All right, so we'll move on to proponent testimony. Anyone in favor wishing to speak in favor of the application? Any of the public wishing, any opponents wishing to speak against the application? And any neutral testimony? No one in favor or against? All right, at this time, we will close the public hearing at nine oh four for final discussion amongst the commissioners and our vote.
So, what we're voting on is approval of a planned development that's dependent on a zone change that we recommended to city council?
Mm-hmm.
So, if the city council does not pass the zone change, then the planned development will not be approved. So, it all, this will, even if you approve this, the zone change still has to go through first.
Right. Do any of the commissioners have any other questions for clarification from the staff? Would anyone? Would anyone at this time like to make a motion in regards to this application for approval or deny?
Chairman, one, one comment, if I may, while you're thinking about whether to make a motion or not. If. If it looks like you are leaning against this application. Before memorializing that with a, a failed vote, I would suggest thinking about whether you have questions for the applicant that we could use to justify. Continuing this matter to the next meeting when we can get the applicant online. And so I would just have, I would, I would hate to have a outright rejection of this application without giving the applicant an opportunity to, and obviously they've had an opportunity, but for all we know, something is, has kept them from, from being able to connect to this virtual meeting.
So I don't see any language here. Or acceptance or denial or delay. I see condition, I see conclusions, conditions of approval. On page 14 and 15 and then attachments.
And in the same regard, it would be nice to hear from some of the people that had negative feelings towards this.
Yeah.
Since there were so many.
I think it's premature to approve this.
I would prefer to have a continuation of the hearing. We, we don't have anything to lose by doing that.
Correct, and I agree with you, Blair. I, I hate for this to be a hasty decision on something that is extremely different, different for all the stuff we've seen in the past here in Speedo. That being said, you know, not petitioning for it or against it at this point, but I do believe that it warrants a delay.
And I think we should add that, you know, it potentially is a big financial effect on that individual. Not that that's the reason why we make a choice, but.
Correct.
You know, we're four or five people sitting here and for him, it might be $100,000. Maybe 200, 300, I don't know.
Yeah.
I do apologize to the, I do apologize to the commissioners. The language should say you move to approve, move to deny, move to continue. This was my first plan development template.
Oh, no worries.
So I just looked and yes, that is missing, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to the next planning commission meeting on January 4th, 2021.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Turn it over to the staff for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Journey, you seconded. Roll call vote, Commissioner, Chairman Parker?
Aye.
Commissioner Woltius?
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Journey? And Commissioner Unger?
Aye.
A motion to continue the hearing on January 4th, 2021. Passed five ayes, no nays and two absents.
Thank you.
Staff will make sure we get in touch with the applicant and make sure they're aware and. If whatever mailing list we have, we've been, we can send out notice that it's, well, not, not, I mean, we have contact information for people who have made comments and so we can let them know of the continuation.
And I know that it's not. It's not so relevant to us as far as passing this decision, whether or not, what we know, what each building will look like, but it might be nice to have an idea of what they're thinking of, whether they're cute little two-story cottages or are they just kind of ramshackle thrown up with a carport. You know, kind of what his vision is or her vision is for this development, some of that might.
We can pass that on.
Be beneficial.
Yeah, we can pass that feedback on.
Is there any other? Business on the staff side? We're looking for some light reading in that code.
Yeah, I wish I, I'm sorry about the delay, how long it's taking this code update. Are the, the Walt Wendelowski who's working on the drafts. First there were the fires and then he had a tree fall on his house and they're living out of an apartment and well, because it's, it's a major problem, they basically have to reconstruct their house. So it's been one delay after another and I just feel bad for them because it's, their 2020 is much worse than my 2020. So unfortunately I don't have really any, any updates on the, the code update.
So I'd like to make a comment about that. Given this application that we've just tabled for the next meeting, it really brought up to me. The timing of revision of the comprehensive plan and our zoning maps. All of this is 10 years old. And some of the comments from surrounding property owners referenced those documents. And I'm thinking, okay, those were approved in 2003. It's now 2020. And. Where are we? You know, kind of going back to some of what Henry talks about, looking to the future. Like really, do we want to be sitting in here using a document to direct our decisions that was finalized 17 years ago? And if we don't, then how can we move forward with that? Da 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 da. Just putting it out there.
I agree, so maybe revisiting, looking at the comprehensive plan.
Well, that's a big deal. That's a.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's something that I would love to see happen because I don't care for it. The, the, the sad fact is that for a lot of communities in Oregon, they, they don't do an overhaul of their comprehensive plan, they just do amendments when they're required and when they're, when they're necessary. And most, mostly the reason for that is the difficulty in finding funding to get your comprehensive plan updated. So we, when I arrived at this job, the, the, it was our, I was, it was already, had been moved toward, we're doing this overhaul of the development code.
Right.
And so I, I did bring up the need for a overhaul in the comprehensive plan as well. What we arrived at was basically kind of the tail wagging the dog a little bit where we're basically saying we're going to overhaul the development code. And in the places where the new development code doesn't agree with the comprehensive plan, we're going to amend the comprehensive plan to, to, to make them so that they both fit. That can work as long as you have the public interaction and these all require public hearings and so hopefully we can get that. But it's, I agree, it's not exactly the same thing. I would prefer to just overhaul it, do the comprehensive plan. But it's a, that's a, it's not for the faint of heart, unfortunately, it's.
And so the other question with that is that there's no timeframe, like you have to overhaul your comprehensive plan every 10, 20 years, 50 years, I don't know what, but there's no requirement like that.
This, the state has. The state basically has recommendations of how often it should be reviewed, revised. They haven't made a requirement because the state doesn't want to fund it. And they don't want to, they want to, they don't want to add another mandated, unfunded mandate onto cities.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of the, the things at play here. But keep in mind also that even if we were to overhaul the comprehensive plan, some of these zone changes would still come before you anyway, because when a comprehensive plan is, is changed, you don't automatically change everybody's zoning to fit it because all of those properties are grandfathered into whatever rights they had before. And it's not until those people say, oh, well, I want to change the zone. And we say, well, if you're going to change the zone, you have to bring it into compliance with the comprehensive plan. And, and then applications like tonight's come forward with the, with the zone change that was reviewed earlier. So those are, those would still happen regardless of how old your comprehensive plan is. But I agree, it's, it's a, it's long in the tooth and it's, we're not so sure that it's really, that that many people in the, in the community are in favor of certain parts of our comprehensive plan.
So I guess it's in conclusion, I would just request that as you go through the new code revision, that you keep in mind some potential quagmires with the comprehensive plan and try to iron out some wrinkles.
My intent is to try to get as many amendments to the comprehensive plan as possible to make, to, to basically make the comprehensive plan a better fit for our community.
Yeah, especially with, I know with the, our proposed park ideas that are, are out there and maybe some areas around it would benefit from kind of a different set of zones. Maybe want to amend our R2, whole R3 and R1 situation as far as in regards to the future parks and development and maybe looking at certain areas that we might want to pick a little less dense than they're proposed to be.
And just to also. I guess remind or in case, if you didn't know, once we hit population of 10,000, there are new land use rules that will go into place about what we have to allow different things. So we are just under that, so we are not over that hump yet, but I'm pretty sure in the next couple of years we will make it. And so there's some additional land use rules that will come into place, so.
That's in regards to like the duplexes and automatic cottage cluster kind of thing.
Yeah, and so those will have to be added in once that, and we have had discussions with Walt about this, about leaving contingencies in the plan is when we update it so that those can be added easily in once we hit that 10,000.
Hopefully we can update it in such a fashion that there's some trigger language that says, okay, once we get to this point in population, these automatically go into effect to bring us into compliance, so I don't, we don't want to do all this all over again.
Yeah, and do we, I mean, current census information puts us where?
We, I don't think that we have anything officially from the census at this point. The latest from, the latest numbers out of Portland State, which is the official population estimate for the, for the state are, I don't recall, I believe 90. Was it 93 or 9400 ish? It's not going to be long before we go over 10,000. So, which I mean, on the one hand, it's a good thing. On the other hand, it's frustrating to, to suddenly get into mandated state requirements that ultimately are going to mean more density.
So is there anything on the docket for January besides the application we just placed there tonight?
Possibly another plan development, but if, I haven't seen the application yet and I think it's getting past the time where they can apply for it. So so far that's probably the only one that I know of.
Phil and Troy? Phil and Troy? Or a different ones? Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there's a couple potential subdivisions coming up, so these aren't the last ones we're going to hear from, so we're going to get some good practice in. I don't, that one won't make it to the January meeting and so probably more I'm looking at February for those, so.
Yeah, I agree, and with our quickly approaching 10,000. You know, it's, it's here to stay, we just need to learn how to make it work for Speedo.
So and then on that note, if we want to talk about the rest of the pending applications, so I don't have any other ones that are coming before you guys right away. I have a partition, a three lot partition off of, forgot to write down the name of the road, right off of Taylor Creek Drive.
Taylor Creek and Park Street.
The one that we want to annex into the city.
Alder.
Alder, there we go, it's right off Alder. You guys approved an annexation for this property a while back and so now they're going to partition it into three lots. I have another one, a two lot partition off of Eighth, they're going to combine two lots. It'll end up being a through lot, but I've had a discussion with the applicant about what they can and can't do with the through lot, they can't access it from the back. So that's another one. We have a property line adjustment. Actually, that's, the property line adjustment is the through lot, the other partition, the two lot partition. That one is. Or three lot partition, excuse me, that one's off 49th Avenue. They're doing a three lot partition, it's a big lot that sits back. They're going to build on one of the lots and then the other two they'll probably sell. We have another two lot partition off of Tamarack. That one, we've had to go through a few things originally when there was a partition done, can't remember how long ago, there was a remnant lot, so that wasn't legally partitioned at the time, but it was separated off, so Joe has given me a big education on what remnant lot means. So some verbiage had to be added into this one to acknowledge the fact that it wasn't done right the first time before we could partition at this one. So that one's, that one's just now coming back to where I can finish that one. Udel Engineering and Joe have worked together to figure out a way to make it legal so we can continue it. And so I'm just now working on that one again. And then I have another property line adjustment that is off of, in the Taylor Creek subdivision. They're combining two lots in the, they should go up around the corner, there's two vacant lots, they're going to combine into one. So a lot of partitions, property line adjustments, Blair gets a lot of practice signing his name. Those seem to keep going quite a bit lately, so. And I just got another one that emailed to me, I didn't write down what it was, so, but I, it's another partition, so.
Plenty of stuff coming on. Sorry, I keep on muting my mic when I meant, mean to turn it on. So sorry, Commissioner Stevens, I said plenty of stuff going on.
Okay, so if you guys want to get out and Commissioner Stevens, I'll email those to you since you're not here, but I went ahead and drew up the planning commission deadlines for 2021 and I added in, so every year that I've been here, we don't do the first Monday in September because of Labor Day and we always choose to do the third. And so I just added this in here, so I will let you guys discuss it and if you want to approve it tonight, then I don't have to worry about having you guys approve it as it gets closer to September. I just figured it's consistent with what you have voted on the past couple of years. So I went ahead and just added that to it for your. Permission.
I, I think most of it looks good. My only concern just quickly looking at it would be the July 5th date coming off of a, a big holiday weekend. But I mean, we can approve it and then maybe amend one here or there. Or is that a legal holiday?
That would be the legal holiday, right? If it's on Sunday. Then it's the Monday, right? Right.
Well, we can, or you can choose to go ahead and change that one right now, we can change to the third Monday of that month also.
To July 19.
Yeah.
Sorry, I had my mic muted again. Commissioner Stevens, I just, what I said there was that that'll, July 5th will be a, a city hall will be closed that day because the July 4th holiday moves to the Monday because it's on a Sunday.
And I'll edit this and I'll email you all a copy of the updated version of it.
Okay.
And that is all I had.
So based, based on those recommendations of changing the July 5th meeting to July 19th. We want to go ahead and. we want to go ahead and move to approve the planning commission meetings and deadlines for 2021?
I don't think it has to be an official vote, it's just something I brought up because we always.
It looks good.
Let it be done.
Yeah.
Let it be so, or no, make it so.
Make it so, you know, unless you guys have something that you didn't like about it, I just wanted to bring it up now, and then we don't have to worry about dealing with it later.
I think it looks good. Sweet. On that, it's 9:25. Oh, Henry, sorry.
You think I'm crying for the last word?
Oh, no, that's over here.
And a subject related to some of the things we talked about tonight. I remember talking to somebody that was a designer from out of town, but he was lamenting what we did on Ames Creek, and he says, what you could have had between Mountain View, down through Sankey Park, Boys and Girls Club, a combination of fine unit developments and public parkways and so forth, and we all know what's there.
Yeah.
We've got carports open on four sides, full of belongings, I'm trying to be nice about it. We had natural areas that had a lot of potential, and we've messed them up.
Yeah, we definitely need to focus on what we want Sweet Home to look like in the end, in the big picture.
So we need to spend more time visioning.
Yeah.
And acquiring property, if you want to do certain things.
You just print more money as a city, just turn the dial up.
Talk to the feds about that.
So I have something to say. This is my last meeting.
I got it, dropping like flies.
Yeah, I sold my house, moving back to Eugene. Sorry, my time on the committee was short. It was a really great experience. I really appreciate the staff and the thorough, very well-done staff reports that made it really easy for me to learn and understand everything, and everybody's been great to work with them, I miss you.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, it was good.
We've appreciated having you.
Yeah, I thought we were on a roll tonight. You were.
Yeah, I know.
You know, you were.
Calling out stuff.
Calling out, and I was seconding, and boom, 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 we got it done.
So on that, with Candace leaving us, where are we at as far as being a full board and Lance stepping down?
We've advertised the, at least one vacancy has been advertised. I don't know if, or I think we're just hoping to get as many applicants as we can, and they can be considered for both vacancies.
I'll have to confirm with Julie exactly. We already have two at-large positions, which are outside the city limits, so we cannot have any more. They all have to, the two new ones will have to be within city limits.
Yeah.
But as far as applicants, I'm not sure yet, so.
I do know that there's at least one soon-to-be former city councillor that will be putting an application in, but other than that, I don't know anything else.
Well, thank you. We'll adjourn the meeting at 9:28.
Thank you. Have a good night, Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Sorry to see you go.
You're all great.